Good evening, everyone. Do I have a motion to exit executive session?
So moved.
Motion by Tom, second by Lindsay, all in favor? Unanimous. Do I have a motion to approve personnel? A, 1 through 23; B, 1 through 7; C, 1 through 17?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Tom, second by Wes, all in favor? Unanimous. Good evening, everybody, welcome. If you want to still find your way in and find your seats, we're going to start with a pledge and a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Wow, we got a full house tonight. You guys must have heard I was chair because Darla's absent. All right, we're going to begin the night with some recognitions, and I'd like to call up Ms. Laura Adams to recognize our Forsyth Teacher Academy.
All right, I'm going to say a few words first, and then my candidates know the queue, and they can go ahead and make their way up. Distinguished members of the board, my name is Laura Adams, and I am the coordinator for the Forsyth Teacher Academy. At this time, it is my honor and privilege to present the most recent program completers in our Forsyth Teacher Academy to you. As an alternate route to certification, the Forsyth Teacher Academy is one of six GTAP programs that is embedded through a school district throughout the state of Georgia. Our academy supports those that work in our districts such as paraprofessionals, substitutes, as well as those from industry with a bachelor's degree, in hopes that they can gain alternate teaching certification through this program. This group of exemplary educators before you this evening is the fifth cohort to complete the academy and is our largest cohort with 27 candidates. Let's give them a hand. These completers are in the following areas: special education, science, world language, and career technical and agricultural education. Tonight, I'd like to begin by honoring the work that Dr. Michelle Dugan has completed over the past five years in the academy. Dr. Dugan ended her tenure as the program coordinator at the halfway point for this cohort. She left an incredible legacy and sends her well wishes to each of our completers tonight. I was truly honored to step into her role as program coordinator July 1st of this year. Each candidate has worked tirelessly to hone their craft in the Forsyth Teacher Academy. I'd like to tell you a couple things they've done. They've completed a two-week summer boot camp with me. They have performed action research projects in their classroom. They've observed over 36 hours of best teaching practice in a variety of settings, and they've showcased their incredible teaching pedagogy through a professional teaching portfolio. It has been a highlight of my professional career to support these amazing candidates in receiving their teaching certification, and it is my privilege to recommend each candidate to the board as an official GTAP program completer through the Georgia Professional Standards Commission. As I call your name, candidates, please step forward to receive your certificate of completion. Please hold all applause until we have finished all candidates. Valerie Anders, adaptive and special education, P-12. Laura Bender, career technical and agricultural education, engineering, 612. Marissa Blankenship, adaptive special education, P-12. Colton Brendel, career technical and agricultural education, computer science, 612. Our next candidate couldn't be with us tonight, and she sent a special message to the board. Francie Chambers, adaptive special education, P-12. Regrettably, I could not attend the recognition for the Forsyth Teacher Academy Cohort 5 tonight. To say that I am honored to be a Forsyth County school teacher is an understatement. My journey from a Forsyth County School Resource Officer to a paraprofessional in the district and now a candidate for the Forsyth Teacher Academy would not have happened without the recommendation of my principal, Ms. Amanda Thrower, and guidance from Dr. Michelle Dugan and Ms. Laura Adams. I'm grateful I was chosen for this program, and I consider it an absolute privilege to teach the students at Liberty Middle School every day. And again, that's Francie Chambers. Sophia Shandron, career technical and agricultural education, computer science, 612. Emily Beatty Day, general special education, K-12. Shannon Dunn, adaptive special education, P-12. Gabriela Illes, world language, ESOL. Kavia Elkins, adaptive special education, K-12. Diana Figora Ortagon, English to speakers of other languages, ESOL. Not yet, there's a lot more. Tony Haynes, who cannot be with us tonight, special education, K-12. Victoria Higgins, who could also not be here tonight, special education, K-12. And next, we have Robin Holt, general special education, K-12. Erica Kim, general special education, K-12, could not be with us this evening. Next, Cheryl McCracken, adaptive special education, K-12. Camilla Pino, foreign language, Spanish, P-12. Michelle Rosen, middle grade, science, 4 through 8. Carlos Javier Santos, foreign language, Spanish, P-12. Sarah Seymour, adaptive special education, P-12. Jeris Smith, general special education, P-12, she couldn't be with us this evening. Next, we have Andrea Stroud, general special education, P-12. Maybe we should clap so it's not so much silence. All right, Kelly Trogden, middle grades, science grades 4 through 8. All right. Christopher Urban, career technical and agricultural education, computer science, could not be with us this evening. Patricia Velez, general special education, P-12. All right, and our final program completer, Ms. Wendy Yarbor, adaptive special education, Let's give all our candidates a big round of applause. Thank you.
I'm Sarah Taylor, Associate Superintendent of Student Services, and that is phenomenal. I'm a big fan of our academy because, as you heard, there's a lot of special education staff that were just announced, and I help support some of the special ed program in Forsyth, and we have a little over 7,000 students with disabilities. So, much appreciated, and we're so glad for your work and everybody's hard work. And a personal shout out to my cousin Kelly, who also got her teaching certificate. I had to do that. Okay, as I'm reading this description, if Tanya Mashburn and Kevin Morrison would always make, are they here? Make their way? The wind ensemble for Lambert High School? Bring the whole crew down. And I'm going to have you line right here. So, this past December 21st, the Lambert High School Wind Ensemble performance at the prestigious 77th Annual Midwest Clinic in Chicago, Illinois. The most distinguished accomplishment is the highest honor a high school wind ensemble can receive. The Midwest Clinic International Band and Orchestra Conference is the world's largest instrumental musical education conference. Held at the McCormick Place West in Chicago every year in December, the event annually draws approximately 17,000 attendance to Chicago from all 50 states and as many as 40 countries worldwide. So, I'm going to let these people introduce it. We've got Tanya Mashburn is our Executive Director of Bands, and then Kevin Morrison, Director of Wind Studies. Awesome. All right, I'm going to let your students, if you guys would shake hands, and then I'm going to let the students introduce themselves.
I'm Nayan Anadari, and I percussion.
I'm Kushal Maganti, and I play tuba.
I'm Jonathan Ma, and I play flute.
I'm Henning Sun, and I play saxophone.
I'm Levi Phillips, and I'm a trumpet player.
And then lastly, this evening, we want to recognize our Employee of the Month, and again, this is special to me, Jennifer Williams, who is currently the principal at Chattahoochee Elementary. I'm going to tell you a little bit about Jennifer. She's back there in the corner, I can see her smiling. So Jennifer has been with us since 2004. She was a teacher at Chattahoochee, Silver City, and Coming Elementary. After that, she became the quality work facilitator at Coming Elementary. Then she moved on in her career as assistant principal and served both at Coming and Chattahoochee. And then in 2017, she became the principal at Chattahoochee. But just recently, Chattahoochee staff don't leave yet, but she was named principal at Chesapeake for next school year, for the 2024-2025 school year. So we're excited that Jennifer has grown up basically in Forsyth County and is one of our leaders, and we are blessed to have her. I have actually a stack of nominees that came in. I'm not going to read all of them, but I have picked one from each sheet so that you guys can hear the theme. Ms. Williams sends weekly emails informing staff of important dates and events that are upcoming. She often states in emails and in person her appreciation for the work that teachers do. When teachers have concerns, she actively listens and discusses possible solutions. Ms. Williams also involved in staff and leadership decision. She keeps staff members appraised of important district information and Chattahoochee's role in meeting county goals. Most importantly, she is approachable. Not only does Ms. Williams interact well with staff, but she also interacts with students daily. She greets students every morning. She tries to learn the student names and make the students feel special. Jennifer does a wonderful job making plans and following through with them. She does a great job with thinking outside of the box and getting feedback from all parties involved. She always utilizes the prior experience when making a decision and backs it up well with data. She always wants to be a part of the students' meetings so that she can form a relationship with their families as well. She is also likes, she is also like, sorry, she also likes to join in when we do classroom activities and always offers to help with anything she can. I told you this was long, and I only picked out, there's hundreds of them. Jennifer is amazing and knowledgeable what is going on with students' and employees' lives. She makes us feel special by following up on previous conversations. She knows many of the students by name and personally. She is on the morning news every day and in the hallway throughout the day. She is a very visible leader. She has a wonderful way of gently correcting student behavior, and she is always great at keeping staff meetings upbeat and on task and done in time, which is important to our staff. So Jennifer, will you come up here? And we are so ever grateful for Jim and Nick's for sponsoring our Employee of the Month, and I'm going to give you all the stuff that you can read it tonight. So two things I want to do, if you are here to support Jennifer Williams, please stand up and be recognized, her family and her friends or staff. So deserving. And then if you're here, family or friends, that were here for the wind ensemble from Lambert, would you please stand up so we can recognize family and friends are there? All right, next on our agenda is our Superior Spotlight, and we're going to turn it over
Good evening. Can you hear me now? Okay. My name is Kelly Fuchs, and I am the proud principal of Coal Mountain Elementary School, and I have some very special guests that I've invited to share with me tonight while we talk about one of our amazing programs. As soon as I was given the opportunity to speak with you, I knew immediately that I wanted to talk to you about our Rock Stars program. I have a PowerPoint, I think it's right here. Am I at the right spot? Would it go past that? No. There we go. Okay, so before I get started talking about our Rock Stars program, I'd love to introduce some very important people that I have with me tonight. I have Carter Dykes, he's a 4th grade student at Coal Mountain Elementary School with me, right? Yep, you want to say hi, Carter?
Hey!
And then I have Ella Plouffe, who's also a 4th grade student. Do you want to say hi to everybody? Hi. And then I have Isaiah Riley, who is a student in our specialized instruction classroom with Ms. Gorley, and he is a 4th grade student this year as well. Do you want to say hi to everybody, Isaiah? So it's one thing for me to stand and talk in front of everybody, which I get to do frequently as a principal, it's very different for them to be up here. So I appreciate them coming tonight, they're being very brave, and they're going to share a little bit about the Rock Stars program. But first, I'd like to talk to you about what our Rock Stars program is. Our Rock Stars program is a reverse inclusion program where our gen ed students get to go into the classrooms of our exceptional students, and they get to interact with our students who are in specialized instruction programs in a variety of ways. They get to have fun with them, they get to have opportunities to help them learn and grow with their academic skills, their social skills, adaptive skills, getting ready to go to the playground, all of the different things that you need to do to be successful at school. They get to come in and they get to help our awesome friends like Isaiah, and they get to learn and grow in their own ways. And so they're going to talk to us a little bit about that. But just to be able to be a rock star, there's a pretty rigorous process. They had to do an application, they had to explain why they wanted to be a rock star, how they felt they could contribute, and they even had to go through an interview. Frequently, we have enough students that participate where we can have them stay in the program for the entire year. They use two of their recess times every week to come into our specialized instruction classrooms and support the learning in those classrooms. They commit to that for the whole year. But we've had as many as 99 students apply before, and we've had to split it into two separate cohorts. So there'd be a semester one group, and then they would be finished after semester one, and then in semester two, then they would get to come with a new set of students to participate in the program. And so the most important things that they do is that they get to help them learn and grow, like I said, in all different ways. So first, I'm going to go through some slides of the different ways that they get to work together. So first is the social and adaptive skills. They start off with parallel play, they practice taking turns, sharing, eating snacks, cleaning up their space after they've played. So Mr. Carter, would you like to tell us a little bit about what you love about being a rock star?
Yes, one of the things I love about being a rock star is I get to play with them, and I get to help them achieve their goals. It's just like whenever they do, you're like, wait, I helped them. That was partially me, too. It's just like you don't know how to explain it. You have to feel it to understand what I'm meaning by this. It's like you can't explain the feeling, it's too strong.
I love that. So not only is it going to help our students in our specialized instruction classrooms work on their skills, but it also helps our general ed students get that feeling of giving back to the community and making connections with students that they don't always cross paths with in their normal daily schedule. Ella, would you like to talk to us a little bit about what you love about being a rock star?
I love that whenever I go, they're always super happy to see me.
Yes, yes, that's awesome. Thank you, Ella. Isaiah, do you want to tell us what you love about when the Rock Stars come to your class So they also help with communication skills. One of the big things is they work on these receptive and expressive language skills, taking turns speaking, sharing ideas, being brave to share those ideas. We have students in our severe and profound intellectual disabilities classrooms who are blind, and so they will help them with their tactile cards as well. So they're learning a lot of skills, and they are understanding how they can help other people access their environment, and they get an opportunity to see how we can communicate in multiple different ways, right? And that would help you not only in your regular classrooms, but anytime you're interacting with people out in the world. Do you want to talk to us about a way that you have fun with your Rock Stars?
Yes, sir. One of the ways that we have a lot of fun with our Rock Stars is they're always willing to go play and go just like, do what you want to do. It's like, it's almost like you're like, yeah. It's like, it's like whenever, you're like, most people think whenever you do Rock Stars, you're like, they're like, why would they waste your recess? You're not wasting your recess, you're having a better recess. You're having recess with more people.
Yes, that's awesome.
It's like, almost like, because whenever I go out with Isaiah sometimes, we'll go, and then we'll just, I'll be out there, and I'll just be like, hey, you want to play tag moves? Like, sure, and then I'll tag you, I'm like, oh.
Now I gotta go now, right? All right, Ella, so we talked about cutting skills a little bit, we talked about playing on the playground. What are things that you like to do to have fun with your Rock Stars?
I like to have fun by pushing them on the swing. And playing hot wheels with Isaiah.
Yes.
And I like to see him like, be happy and smile.
Yes, that's awesome. So whenever we were practicing our conversation, we talked a lot about Duke Kaboom. So we do lots of those kinds of races, right? And we make predictions on that? What is your favorite thing to do just for fun with your Rock Stars?
Play on the playground.
Play on the playground.
Playing tag with Carter.
That's a great place. So we talked a little bit about this, too, but with academic skills, one of the big things that we do is students can read to our students in our specialized instruction classrooms, and they work on those listening and reading comprehension skills, which is one of those prerequisites that we have for being able to read on our own. But they also, I think, was it you that were doing flashcards with sight words recently?
Yes, I was.
Yep, so we do sight words, practice writing our name, letter recognition, writing sentences, daily living skills. We've got to get ready to go out on the playground, especially in the winter, so we help put on our jackets, we work our zippers and buttons, those kinds of things, making some plans on what to do first, second, and third. And lastly, this is a little bit more of what we were talking about with the scissor skills, is those physical therapy and occupational therapy skills. So physical therapy skills are gross motor, walking around the school, going on sensory walks, using our big muscles to navigate our environment. And then our OT skills, our fine motor skills. So that's practicing drawing, outlining, writing names, and things like that. So our Rock Stars work in all different kinds of ways to support our students, and as you can see, not only are our students in our specialized instruction classrooms getting a benefit, but our general education students are getting a benefit as well. So is there anything else that you guys had planned to talk about that you'd like to share before we let them move on to the next step?
Um, no, not really.
It's everything? Okay. We had so much fun preparing this, and we found so much joy in talking about the ways that we interact with each other, so thank you for this opportunity. Have a good evening.
That was awesome, guys, thank you. All right, next up is DeSana Middle with a story of connection.
While Mr. Sargent is making his way to the podium, our strategic plan can be summed up in three words in Forsyth County schools, and those three words are safe, connected, and thriving. So as I visit all of our schools this academic year, I've been asking our leadership teams at our schools to give me examples, show me how we're ensuring all students and all staff and all families feel connected to your school. So I had an opportunity to visit DeSana Middle School a few weeks ago, and they shared with me an incredibly heartwarming story of how they made sure a new student to Forsyth County Schools felt connected immediately, and I thought it was so powerful, I asked Mr. Sargent and his team if they'd share it with us tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Bearden, thank you for the board for this opportunity to share our story of connection with you all. And before I let Coach Nash come up here, I just wanted again just to thank you for this opportunity, but also give some context. As Dr. Bearden said, as soon as Coach Nash told the administrative team this story, I felt like it was important for our staff to hear this immediately. And so our next staff meeting, we gathered together, and I asked Scott if I could read the letter that he's about to read to you all, and it's really just been a catalyst for our staff in general. As we talk about this vision of creating a safe, connected, and thriving school, this letter and this instance has really, again, just been a catalyst for us. And when Dr. Bearden visited us in January following that December faculty meeting, we shared the same story with him, and I think he said it best when he said you build connections one person and one story at a time. And so we're excited to share this with you all here tonight. And Coach Nash, you want to come up?
Thank you very much, I appreciate the opportunity. I'm Scott Nash, teacher and coach at DeSana Middle School, and this summer I had the honor of meeting Glevis Mendoza. Glevis came to us from Venezuela, he attended the basketball camp there this summer, and I quickly got to know him through communications with he and his family. It didn't take long to realize that Glevis was a special young man, because as I watched him at the camp, he was one of our best campers, and not for the usual things, although he does have a whole lot of skill at basketball, I noticed the other things, the intangibles, like always smiling, helping guys up off the floor, high-fiving teammates, and he doesn't even know these guys yet. Doing all that with a smile on his face, and oftentimes communicating with them in different ways because English was not his first language. He then went on to make our basketball team, which was one of his goals. Another goal, I got ahead of myself there, another goal that he had was to play basketball on a hardwood court. And you know, when he, Jason was telling me about his first experience coming into the gym, and he was just in awe of the gym that he would be attending here in Forsyth County. in Forsyth County. I thought that was a great story. I'll let him tell you a little bit more about his dreams and goals. But before we do that, I want him to know publicly how proud I am of him, and not just for his huge heart for others, but for the young man that he is. He's, he's made a big impact on my life, I know. And I would now like to read you the letter that he wrote to me in early November. "Coach Nash, I want to thank you again for the opportunity to play for you and represent DeSana as a student athlete. As you can understand, our ability to connect has been limited due to my lack of English, but I want to share my heart with you. Moving to a different continent, a new county, a new state, a new city, and a new school has been a little overwhelming. It took me a little longer than I had hoped to make necessary adjustments to my game and raise them to the level needed to be an impact player for our team. Please know, I am ready. The moment you look down the bench and need something of me to help our team, you can count on me. I will play in a way that will make it hard for you to take me off of the court. Thank you so much for being a part of my dream in America." So I'd like to present, please welcome Glevis Mendoza.
Hi, my name is Glevis Mendoza.
First of all, thank you for being here and the opportunity to be here.
This is something very special for me.
Thank you for the district.
To our principal, Mr. Sargent.
To my friend and my coach Nash. It's very special for me to be here because he's just overwhelmed. I'm very nervous. I'm sorry. Thank you for the opportunity that you're bringing me. Opportunity that I will never have in my country. Just thank you. There's not much I can say besides being thankful. To, just to get here was a very hard and long trip. We traveled through a lot of places that was very complicated. But thank God, we're here and we're safe. Again, thank you for everything and everyone.
How's that jump shot? It's getting better?
Very good.
Mr. Sargent, do you want to say a few words?
I will jump in there, yes.
So this is Glevis' mom and Glevis' dad.
Yes. Well, I'm actually...
Brother-in-law, I'm sorry.
Brother-in-law, yes. So I had the opportunity to meet this family five years ago in Venezuela. And I, I married the sister of this young man, and I promised to bring the family to America. We did all the things right, immigrated legally, come here, and blessed to be in such a great school district. I didn't realize I was going to stumble upon such a great district and community of Alpharetta. I want to do thank Mr. Sargent and Coach Nash because they were a big part of us working through to get us into this school. You're spot-on with connection, right? And I will say this, as we all sit in here, we're connected as either supporters, high achievers, or people who facilitate those high achievers, right? And that connection is really the baseline of where we can grow. Where connection happens, people get vulnerable. They share, hey, I have a hard time reading, or they share that they're good in math. In that exchange, I think as educators and facilitators, we then use that connection to help kids like Glevis accomplish their dreams. And so on this day, I'm happy that I was able to connect with this young man and his family. We sat down together that day and wrote that letter and said, listen, you're going to be behind the eight ball a little bit. You don't have the same ability to articulate, right? But you're going to have to go a step further and find ways to get these educated attention that you care about your life, that you're going to come here and do well. And I'm grateful he's done that, as you guys see. And, but at the end, I just said, just leave us with that. That connection piece is really the doorstep where we start to do some great things for the community. I'm excited to be a part of it. I'm excited to watch this guy achieve, and we're grateful. Thank you.
Glevis, Glevis, ante que te vayan.
Hi, mi nombre es Your Lady.
Hi, my name is Your Lady.
Soy la mamá de Glevis.
I am Glevis' mom.
Estoy nerviosa de estar parada aquí porque...
I'm very nervous.
Y en mis sueños lo había visto visualizado.
Not even in my dreams I visualize my son being here.
Una oportunidad, un camino duro.
It's an opportunity and a very hard road.
Gracias por este país brindarnos oportunidades.
For this country, for the opportunities.
Por las oportunidades que se le están brindando a mi hijo.
And all the opportunities that are being brought to my son.
Está, vinimos encaminados por unos sueños y él está día a día enfocado en sus estudios, en su deporte por lograrlo.
We had dreams, and he's very focused on his studies and his sports because that's what he wants to do.
Enormemente agradecidos con la oportunidad. Gracias a Dios a todos ustedes.
Thank you, God, and very thankful to all of you.
Quiero decir que estoy muy orgullosa de mi hijo.
And I just want to say that I'm very proud of my son.
Sé que lo va a lograr y va a cumplir sus sueños.
And I know that he's going to fulfill the dreams.
Lo estamos haciendo bien y lo vamos a seguir haciendo bien.
We're doing the right thing, and we're going to continue to do the right thing.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Mamá, te felicito. Se ve que estás criando un gran hijo. Y Glevis, bienvenido a este país. Tú eres un ejemplo, ejemplar de lo que se quiere ver en este país en la juventud. Y sé que vas a obtener tus sueños. Sigue luchando.
All right. That concludes our recognitions for the night. So we're going to have a short recess. If you want to make, make like a bread tuck and hall buns, this is the time before we get into the, into the business portion. So we'll have a quick two or three-minute recess. We're going to continue with our program. Before we do, I want to recognize Mr. Ibrahim Menley, who's here earning a badge for his Eagle Scouts, who are future Eagle Scout in the house. All right, we're going to move into public participation on agenda items. Some ground rules about this, this portion of the agenda. One, this is meant to be about items that are on the agenda. So it should be something listed or under consideration for the board tonight. Please be respectful of that rule. Two, you get three minutes for your remarks. There's a little timer up there. When the green light is on, you're good. When the yellow light turns on, it means you have thirty seconds. And when the red light turns on, it means your time's up. So if you can just finish your thought and, and wrap it up. So we had three people sign up today. The first is Saif Hassan regarding the Coal Mountain Elementary School.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Saif Hassan, a public school student of Forsyth County Schools. Congratulations Coal Mountain Elementary School for all its success, and proving how much efficient public education funding truly achieves. At the beginning of 2024, Eleven Alive published a list. This list ranked all the public school systems in the state of Georgia. List reads off, starting with the best school system, Buford, then moves on to the economy, and then finally, Forsyth County was third, the third-best county in Georgia for public education. If this is the case, then how can one of our state senators representing coming Georgia, Greg Dulzal, sponsor a bill that could drain nearly $200 million of public school funding in favor of private school vouchers? It takes almost $200 million away from the proven success of schools such as Coal Mountain Elementary and gives it away to private education. This $200 million, keep in mind, only becomes $200 million if merely 2% of eligible vouchers are redeemed, according to the current bylaws of the bill, Senate Bill 233. The foul law of this bill towards public school dollars is untamed and hypocritical from the end of the man who represents Forsyth County. We've seen the success that comes when we invest in our futures. As Coal Mountain Elementary School has proved, as the third-highest-ranking county in the state of Georgia, do we not see the need to extend the privilege of our esteemed public schools to those who are less fortunate down south in Georgia? The thing, the thing is that we do. As citizens, we care about public education. And our board has done an amazing job to make sure that education is prioritized, and they've proven it. They've proven this with Coal Mountain, but no. Senator Dulzal is not the one who's going to suffer due to these budget cuts as he misrepresents Forsyth County and continues to feed support into these voucher bills. Why are we not being represented as Forsyth County, paving the way for more counties to follow our footsteps into justly-funded public education? Why do we not take this voucher, throw it in the trash, and invest more money to make sure the future of our America, our public schools, have the resources that they need to be successful? The council ratio is currently 450 students to one counselor. The recommended amount is 250 to one. That is almost double. Yet, we continue to invest more public school dollars into private vouchers because Greg Dulzal is a face of Forsyth County, and he wouldn't be the one to represent, to fuel the repercussions of this bill. The hypocrisy and arrogance of Senate Bill 233 in Georgia's legislature needs to be addressed, starting with the number-one sponsor of the bill, the senator who finds no wrong in defunding the public school system because his own county is the third-best in the state. Thank you.
We like to think we're the best in the state. Next up is Isabella Rapacholo. Did I say that right?
No, that's okay.
Tell me how to say it.
Rapacholi.
Rapacholi.
Yes. Good evening, all. Sorry, I'm on the phone right now, so excuse me if I'm like crouching. But, so good evening to you all. My name is Isabella Rapacholi, and I'm a student at Alliance Academy for Innovation. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you all today, and I'm here to comment on the zoning impact reports. With the incredible growth Forsyth County has experienced and continues to experience, levels of student capacity vary greatly, with many schools being overpopulated and some being underpopulated. Particularly with the overpopulation issue, crowded school environments can fundamentally affect learning of all students, an issue that would be deeply exacerbated by the impact of voucher bills such as SB 233. You have heard from the dangers of voucher bills from my peers, and I want to discuss issues that are much more urgent to direct state and county resources towards addressing. Instead of spending on voucher bills that allocate major sums of money to private schools, we must focus on supporting public school students so that they do not feel incentivized or pressured to move schools in the first place by supporting better funding for student initiatives, such as the need for more school-sponsored academic resources, mental health support, and as it pertains to the zoning report, strengthening school infrastructure, and directing county resources to address any student capacity issue so that we can truly set students up for success for life as proud contributors to the Georgia workforce and healthy individuals, starting with action right here in Forsyth County. Vouchers deeply impact the future and present of Georgia students everywhere, so thank you to those of you who have already been proud advocates against bills like these. And I implore you all to start or continue to oppose legislation like this for the sake of Forsyth County students such as myself and my peers here today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up is Charmade Venkatrapmani. Oof, I got that wrong, I'm sure.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Charmade Venkatrapmani. I'm a student at South Forsyth High School, and I thank you all for the opportunity to address you all today. As my peers have stated, I'm here to shed light on the implications of voucher bills like Senate Bill 233, particularly concerning their impact on funding allocated towards transportation and how it intertwines with our agenda item regarding overnight field trips. As a student, I want to emphasize how crucial access to reliable transportation is for us. It's not merely about getting from point A to point B. It's about ensuring equal opportunities for all students to receive quality education. Unfortunately, the reality is starkly different, especially for those, especially for those in more economically-challenged and rural areas of our state. The allocation of funds towards voucher bills like Senate Bill 233 diverts much-needed resources away from addressing pressing issues such as transportation. Increased enrollment, soaring fuel prices, and escalating labor costs strain school districts, making it increasingly difficult to provide adequate transportation services. This deficiency correlates with increased absenteeism, which places students at a significant disadvantage when it comes to their education and future prospects. As a student reliant on school buses myself, I understand the first, I understand firsthand the impact transportation has on our daily lives. It's not, it's merely, not merely a motive commute. It ensures we can access the education we deserve. Yet, the disparity in transportation availability across counties increases educational inequality, hindering our collective progress. Moreover, when considering the agenda item of overnight field trips, these experiences are important for holistic development, fostering experiential learning and social growth. However, reduced funding towards transportation due to bills like Senate Bill 233 jeopardizes the feasibility of such enriching experiences for our students. Even if these transportation trips are facilitated by private companies such as charter buses, the lack of funding exacerbates the financial burden on students, potentially limiting their access to these enriching opportunities. In closing, I want to extend my gratitude to those advocating against bills like Senate Bill 233, and urge everyone to stand firm in opposing legislation that undermines the educational well-being of students statewide. We owe it to ourselves and future generations to prioritize investments in accessible and reliable transportation, ensuring that every student, regardless of their background, has the opportunity to thrive academically and beyond. This includes recognizing the impact on overnight field trips, where a lack of funding for transportation can limit opportunities for students to engage in these transformative experiences. Let us collectively commit to fostering an educational environment where all students can access the resources that they need to succeed. Thank you.
All right. That includes the public participation on agenda items. Moving on, next we have a consent agenda before the board. Has everyone had their questions answered? Any, any comments or discussion? Just one, one thing that I would like to point out just for the benefit of the public is that this consent agenda does include a board resolution to start the procurement process on the addition to Mashburn Elementary, which is one of the things we all promised the community when we did our last redistricting. So just want everyone to be aware that that's moving forward. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Lindsay, second by Tom. All in favor? Unanimous? All right. Next up, presentation and discussion items with Mr. Larry Hamel, the finance report. Our favorite time of the night.
So tonight, we'll discuss the January 2024 financial statements. As always, we keep goal three in mind, which is effective efficiency planning, the school system. So we started the month off with $310 million. We ended the month with about $281 million. We had that $1,000 supplement the governor had this month, so that kind of increased our expenses this month. You can see it was 65 million versus 35 that came in. We did end the month with $281 million. This time last year, we were about 241, so we're up about $40 million. On the revenue report, we're at 77.19% this time year-to-date. This time last year, we're at 75.56. We're ahead of schedule. I did want to point out that on the Avlam tax, we're at 98.76%, and this time last year, we're at 97.84. So we're almost a full point up on that, collection-wise. Based on what the emails I've gotten the last couple of days from the county tax commission office, it looks like we're down to less than $3 million left to collect for the year-to-date to meet the full 100% of what we had predicted to get. On the other categories, they're falling in line where they should be. On the expenditure side, we're at 57.46% collections year-to-date, I mean expenditures year-to-date. And last year, we're at 57.15. We're a little bit ahead of schedule of last year. But if you look at a straight-line expenditure, seven months divided by 12, basically, it should be about 58.33, so a little bit below that. On cash analysis, for the debt service account, remember, we dropped the milage rate a year ago, actually, two years ago, down to 1.418. The cash right now, just the cash balance is 545,000, and we were at 3.6 last year. So the money that you guys allowed us to reserve in the general fund and SPOS 5 is really going to pay a lot of dividends going forward, making up for the difference of that one mil. On the debt service LGRP account, there's 3.8 there. Last year, it was about 12.3. This SPOS 5 account, we had about 41 million last year. We're down to 11.4. So you can see we're quickly spending that SPOS 5 account out. SPOS 6, we had 44.9 this year, this time this month. And last year, we were at 42.9. Overall, we were at about $100 million versus the 60.8 we have now. Special region funds are about what we expect them to be. Last year, we had about $11 million expenditures, but we had that extra money from CARE Act we spent on the ERUs at those two schools. Capital projects and cash school food services. Capital projects and cash, school food services. Capital projects, we're at $14 million. Uh, last year, we were at 27. So we're spending that money down as the projects are winding up, especially for SPOS 5. Uh, school food services, uh, was 17.6 million this time last year. We're at 22.2. So, you can see we actually spent down this month a little bit compared to what we brought in for revenue, about $300,000. On the investment summary side, for the general fund, we're at $216 million. This time last year, we're 194.7, so we're slightly up there. Um, and we're pulling in a little bit over 5% LGIP fund. So this past month, uh, I believe we pulled in over $1 million for interest. And we're ahead of schedule in collections for that. Debt service is down to 3.8. We had 12.3 last year. Uh, the school food service fund is brand-new. We just started that this year. Todd reached out to us and asked us to put another $5 million on that account, so we moved $5 million over. Next month, you'll see, there's about $15 million in that fund. The 354 fund, we're at $11 million for SPOS 5. And this time last year, we're at $41 million, so you can see we're spending that money down. And the SPOS 6, we're at 44.9. Last year, we were 42.9, which is ahead of schedule in collections. Overall, this time last year, we had about $292.9 million in investments, and we're at 286. So we're still trying to maximize as much of that as possible. So on the SPOS collections, so we're, in total, we're 21 months into our SPOS collections on a 16-month SPOS 6. Based on the collections, when I do compare to where we thought we were going to be, we're six months in advance, or two quarters. So, if we take the, the six months added to that, we're basically 27 in theory, in terms of collections. So that means we only got 33 months left to collect at this rate we're going. So, um, talking to, uh, Dr. Bearden and Jennifer, we're probably going to start putting a group together in the fall to start talking about SPOS 7 and what that looks like going forward. The first seven months, we were collecting about 8.78% ahead of schedule, but the last 14 months, we've only been collecting 1.51% year-over-year. So you can see it's kind of slowed down a lot. Overall, we've collected about 3.94% over the 21 months over last year's collections. The elementary schools are sitting on about $4.9 million. They had about almost the exact same mon- same amount of money as they did last year. The middle schools are sitting on 2.4. They had about 2.1. The high schools at 6.5, and they had about 5.9. Overall, the percentages haven't changed much. Elementary school was 38 this time last year, and the elementary was 16. That's about the only change they've had. Overall, the cash is just slightly above where it was last year by a small amount. And that is the financials for January 2024. Any questions?
Thank you, Larry.
All right, no problem. All right, next up, action items. First, uh, first thing on Employee Work Calendar is 2425 with Mr. Derek Hershey.
We have a proposal for our, uh, 2425 employee, uh, calendars. Uh, our employees seem to like to know when they're getting to take vacation, so... Uh, you guys have seen a copy of that, I believe so, correct?
Yes.
Do you have any questions? I'd like to recommend that Dr. Bearden...
I've been approval of the employee work calendar for 2425.
Do I have a motion to approve the employee work calendar for 24 and 25?
So moved.
Motion by Tom, second by Wes. Is there any discussion? Nope. All in favor? Unanimous. Next up is Policy JBCB, non-resident students, with Mr. Mike Evans.
All right. Good evening. Uh, this is just to follow up to the policy change that we had presented this past month, and we left it open for public participation, um, which we received no, uh, feedback. Um, so this is just to update the language for, uh, who can, um, be a student within Forsyth County Schools. Uh, and at one point, we allowed, um, students from outside of the county to attend a virtual school, and we no longer do that, so we're just cleaning this policy up a little bit. And if there's any legislative changes down the road, we'll obviously make changes as needed. So at this time, I'd ask the superintendent to recommend approval for the policy change.
Recommend a policy approval on JBCB non-resident students.
Do we have a motion to approve Policy JBCB as presented? Motion by Lindsay, second by Wes. All in favor?
Thank you.
Unanimous. Next up is point of information. The board members have been provided this information. Any questions or discussion? Nope. All right, I don't think we need a recess. Do you guys think? Okay, we're going to go right into public participation on non-agenda items. The rules are the same as the previous, uh, the previous portion. The first speaker is Mr. Jared Kershaw.
Thank you. Last month, we heard the tale of a mentally ill high school teacher who, in 2018, brought a gun to school to commit suicide by cop. Before his third-period class arrived, he barricaded himself in his classroom and fired a single warning shot when the principal tried to talk him down. After he was stopped by good guys with guns, he was convicted and sentenced to two years in prison. And assuming he is still alive today, he has four more years of probation left. This story was presented as a stark warning against allowing responsible, law-abiding teachers from exercising their right of self-defense. We are supposed to somehow believe that if we allow good, mentally healthy, responsible adults carry firearms at school, that this will somehow magically create more mentally ill murderers who will target our schools. Try as I might, I just can't see the connection. In 2016, a radical Islamic jihadist murdered dozens of people at the Orlando Pulse nightclub, a prominent gay establishment. In response, I joined other volunteers in Operation Blazing Sword dedicated to teaching firearm safety to the LGBTQ community for free, so that they could learn how to responsibly exercise their God-given right to self-defense. Living close by to Hollywood, California at the time, I had the privilege of sharing my firearms expertise with over a dozen gay couples. And during this time, I became an NRA-certified instructor in a number of disciplines. Now, if we banned responsible, law-abiding gun owners from carrying firearms when working in, say, nightclubs, do you think that would make them a more attractive or a less attractive target to mentally ill or religiously deranged psychopaths? In Forsyth County, we are blessed to have armed officers on every campus. The only thing that will stop a bad guy with a gun is a good guy with a gun. And one good guy is much better than zero good guys. If we want to deter mentally ill maniacs from targeting schools, the best way to do that is to make them less certain about their odds. I want bad guys to have to worry about every responsible adult in a school, not just the one resource officer open carrying. Now, of course, training is key in order to responsibly carry, even more so when dealing with our children. But I would honestly feel safer in this room if everyone was responsibly armed, rather than only our sheriff's deputies. Not because I doubt their bravery or their skill, but because they're not invincible. And if a wild band of Antifa or military-age male illegal immigrants decided to attack these offices, we'd all be glad for every armed citizen here. With all that said, I'd like to ask the board to commit to piloting any teacher concealed carry program offered by our legislature, but to keep completely confidential which school it is being piloted at. Whether or not a single teacher signs up, just the possible threat of one more responsible armed individual at even a single school in our district will provide a protective effect against any would-be murderers by making our schools less attractive targets. Murderers want easy, unarmed targets. And so on that note, thank you very much for your time, and I'd love to buy lunch for anyone who disagrees with you.
Thank you. Next up is Ms. Latricia Jackson.
Happy Black History Month. I want to talk about the Black History Month program hosted by Forsyth County Schools. It was such a great event at the Folk House Center on February 6. Not that any of you would know because none of you were there. I'm even wearing the ribbon I got at the event because it meant so much to me to attend the first inaugural Black History Month event that absolutely none of you attended. Daniel Blackman, a father in this community, was the emcee. This event was an ideal that he had that became a reality. A reality none of you witnessed because you did not attend. Pastor Sneed spoke to everyone at the longest table event. He spoke of the History and the Descendants Scholarship Fund. It was great information, but you missed it because you were not there. Ms. Osby graced us with her presence and her words. Her grandparents were forced out of Forsyth County. She talked about her grandparents and the importance of Black history. She was able to share her story to people who nodded as she spoke, to people who laughed when she asked us to find her a boyfriend in Forsyth County. But you all missed it because none of you were there. It was great to see the schools represented, black staff in the building and black parents. It was nice to see current principals and upcoming principals in attendance. Who was missing? The superintendent, the deputy superintendent, and the entire school board. You show up for what is important and for what matters to you. We all do it. It was unfortunate that Black History kept you all at home or in your office or wherever you were at 11:30 a.m. on February 6. I'm not sure if you didn't care or weren't interested. I don't know why you didn't show up. Last time I spoke, I asked you to remove the word "all" from the mission statement. All students, all staff members, all parents, do not matter. And all of you proved it when all of you decided to skip the first inaugural Black History event. Ms. Mayo, thank you for showing up.
Do we have a motion to adjourn? Second. Motion by Lindsay, second by Wes. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, everybody.